For the Pledge of Allegiance? And we'd like to call our special guests up today to help us with the pledge. And Commissioner McGloin and Commissioner Termack will take a second to introduce them. You guys can stand right up there at the podium.
Veterans, too. So today, we have two firemen from Greenwood Holes Company in Music. We have Dylan Wells. He's a laborer for H&amp;K Group based out of Skippback, PA. Dylan currently works on the P3 Susquehanna Interstate 80 project in Halsted. Dylan has been a volunteer firefighter since he was 18 years old. He works part of H&amp;K's paving and milling and excavating crews. And Dylan utilizes his never quit attitude and work ethic and applies to his fire service. So thank you, Dylan. And we have Troy Harris, local 13 boiler maker welder for five years. Troy has been welding for eight years and a volunteer firefighter for three. Troy travels northeast of the United States, building and repairing power plants and oil refineries. Troy uses his knowledge and problem solving and quick decision making of his trade, then transfers that to fire service to help someone at their worst times. So thank you, both of you, for coming. And then Matt, you have the two veterans that we have here.
Our veterans that are here today, Harold Raybuild and Paul Nowakowski. Harold served in the Navy from 1963 to 1969, and Paul served in the Air Force from 1972 to 1976. Thank you, men, for being here with us today, and thank you for your service, and thank you for all that you do as well, and thanks for being here today.
Thank you, guys.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your service. Okay, may I please have a motion to accept the reading and approval of the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. So if anyone would like to come up and speak, now's the time. No? Okay. Ordinance 24-0027.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the first reading of ordinance 291. It's repealing the prior Code of Ethics and adopting a conflict of interest in Code of Ethics policy for Lackawanna County and setting forth prohibited conduct and imposing penalties for violations thereof. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, whereas Section 509 of the Pennsylvania County Code allows for the Board of Commissioners to adopt resolutions and ordinances regulating the affairs of the county, and whereas Section 1.3-302A of the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter allows for the Board of Commissioners to enact and repeal resolutions, ordinance is not inconsistent with the Home Rule Charter and Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas the Board of Commissioners had previously adopted a county Code of Ethics on January 8th, 2008, and amended on June 11th, 2008, and whereas the Board of Commissioners believe it is in the best interest of Lackawanna County to repeal the 2008 Code of Ethics and adopt the attached conflict of interest in Code of Ethics to ensure that the county officials and employees act with professionalism and integrity. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna hereby ordains as follows: Number one, the attached conflict of interest in Code of Ethics is hereby adopted in accordance with Section 1.3-308 of the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter. Number two, all resolutions of ordinances inconsistent here with shall be, and the same hereby, are repealed. Number three, if a section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional or invalid for any reason by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decisions shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Number four, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect 10 days after enactment as required by law. Commissioners, this is the first reading. On the second reading, two weeks from now, you will take a vote.
And Don, if you want to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. After you first come into office, you had asked me to look at and do a revision of the existing Ethics Code for the county. The last one was adopted back in 2008. It's a little dated, and it was kind of, let's say, short definitions and things of that nature. So we undertook a comprehensive redo of the Ethics Code and conflict of interest. We tightened it up, and we added more clarity to it. And as you can see, it's a little more voluminous, but I think it gets the job done, Commissioners.
Any of the Commissioners like to comment?
So just to name a few things inside this new ethics policy, this applies to all county personnel and employees. It establishes protections for confidential information. It tightens the rules on vendors and bidders during the bid, RFP and RFQ process. And this new policy prohibits nepotism in the county. As Donna just mentioned, this county's policy had not been reviewed in some time, so we wanted to make sure we took a long, hard look at this and make the necessary up-to-date adjustments that were needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Termack?
This has been a long time coming, so it's good that we finally got it up to date. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very pleased with this, the unveiling of the county's updated Code of Ethics. This is something that Commissioner McGloin and I promised as we campaigned across this county, and today we are delivering on that promise. The updated Ethics Code reinforces our commitment to transparent, accountable, and ethical governance. Recognizing the evolving landscape of public service, this revision comes 16 years after the initial adoption of the Code of Ethics in 2008. This emphasizes our dedication to adopt and uphold the absolute highest standards in county government. When you read through this code, it leaves absolutely no wiggle room for any sort of unethical behavior. Commissioner McGloin just touched on a lot of the highlights. This tightens a lot of things up, adds a lot of new provisions that I think are going to be very helpful. Upholding ethics in county government is absolutely paramount to ensuring trust, integrity, and accountability as we serve the residents of Lackawanna County. And I want to thank our solicitor, Don Fredrickson, for his hard work on this. Thank you. Resolution 24-0025.
Approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund, numbers 367, 370-368, 005, inclusive totaling $7,842,872.97. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $9,864,100.56. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0025?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0014.
Granting the right-of-way in Scranton, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve a grant of right-of-way for tree work along Crown Avenue in Scranton with PPL Electric Utilities to trim and remove trees impacting aerial utilities. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the county's engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
Thank you. Frank?
Good morning. This proposed ordinance would allow PPL to enter a county-owned property in Scranton located along Crown Avenue, near the Crown Avenue-Cherry Street intersection. It would allow PPL to enter the property and clear trees that are in close proximity to PPL's aerial utilities. It's standard practice, routine maintenance performed by PPL often. I've read the proposed agreement, excuse me, including the restoration language. I have no concerns and recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Frank?
Frank, nope, there's no financial impact on this, right? All costs are on PPL now?
Yep, all costs are borne by PPL, including any site restoration.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0014?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0015.
Granting right-of-way in Elmhurst, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve a grant of right-of-way to PPL Electric Utilities Corporation to perform utility relocations as part of the state route 435 and G.C. Bridge replacement projects in Elmhurst Township. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Once again, here is engineer, Mr. Frank Suma.
This is also another proposed ordinance for PPL right-of-way access. This access would be for property owned by the county in Elmhurst Township, and this proposed work would be for PPL to perform the necessary utility relocation to accommodate the county's proposed bridge replacement on G.C. Smith Road, as well as the coordinated and simultaneous PennDOT SR 435 project. Again, I've read the agreement, the standard language that's proposed is, I have no concerns with it and recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Suma? Okay. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0015?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0016.
Ratifying Consulting Services Agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify the Consulting Services Agreement with MacRith Consulting, LLC, 1435 Fieldbrook Drive, York, Pennsylvania, for six-month agreement to commence on January 22nd, 2024, with an option to extend upon agreement of both parties at a cost of $10,000 per month. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, this was, this agreement has been looked over by our solicitor. If you have any questions for him about it. And joining us via Zoom is the consultant, Bev McRith.
Okay. Thanks, Bev. Can you hear us? Good morning. So we'll turn the floor over to you if you want to introduce yourself to the public and just kind of give us a rundown on what you're doing, what you've been doing, and kind of the state of the affairs of Youth and Family Services. Thank you. Yeah, I think you should, you're pretty accomplished. I think you should pat yourself on the back a little bit. Thank you. You know, Bev, Bev, he still has to vote on this contract, you know? So you just lost his vote. Does anyone have any, Commissioner, have any questions for Mrs. McRith?
Just.
Okay. All right, Bev, thank you so much. We appreciate it. You're doing a great job, and can't tell you how much it means to us that you're stepping up and you're trying to help us turn this thing around. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any, Commissioner, have any questions for Mrs. McRith? Okay. All right, Bev, thank you so much. We appreciate it. You're doing a great job, and can't tell you how much it means to us that you're stepping up and you're trying to help us turn this thing around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0016?
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
I just want to say real quick while we still have Bev here, I think Bev has addressed everything that needed to be addressed. Her resume speaks for itself. I have been so impressed with Bev. She has been nothing short of spectacular since the day that we've met her. We are fully confident in Bev and her leadership, her capabilities, and what she brings to the table. So again, Bev, thank you so much for being a part of this journey with us, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Commissioner Termack, any comments?
Yep, thank you. As the older Commissioner, I appreciate you coming in and giving us a hand, but I know we're going to get this all taken care of, and we're going to be a shining example for the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. It's no secret that, as you just heard, our Office of Youth and Family Services faces absolutely enormous challenges. And one of the biggest challenges, as Bev just mentioned, is that the office is currently woefully understaffed in terms of caseworkers. The cases, many heart-wrenching, very complex situations, continue to pile up, which suffocates those caseworkers who are already overstretched and who are doing the very, very best they can to help these children and these families. So in the face of this and many other issues, we decided that we needed to act immediately, and we recognize the need to bring in someone with experience in the field, someone who is independent, and who could give us a fresh look at the entire operation. And one of the things that we continue to harp, not just in this case, but in many other cases, is that just because it's been done a certain way, doesn't mean that that is the right way. And that's why I think it's important to take a fresh look at everything. So bringing Bev on has really helped us in many respects, and she's already making a difference, and I feel we are moving in the right direction. Now, as Bev said, many offices of Youth and Family Services are facing similar issues across the state of Pennsylvania, but that doesn't mean we should just sit back and not do everything in our power to try to turn this around. The people who are still working in the office, the people who are still left, they are trying their very best, day in and day out. And I know this because we met with them, and we sat down with them, and we listened to them. The issues that we face in our county in terms of child welfare, in terms of poverty, poverty that you and I and most people could not even imagine if we tried, it's there. We may not see it, but it is there, and it is unbelievable. All of this cannot be thrown solely at the feet of the Office of Youth and Family Services. This problem, this complex issue, cannot be thrown solely at their feet. This has to be a community effort. These are serious issues. These are societal problems that one agency alone cannot solve. And as Bev said, and she's right, everyone has got to be part of this solution. So just to recap, we are committed, as county commissioners, to working every single day to fixing these issues, getting our full license back, and I'm confident that we will be able to do it, but it's not going to be easy, and it is going to take time. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Thanks, Bev.
Thank you.
Resolution 24-0017.
Approving Professional Services Agreement for the prison, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Professional Services Agreement with G.M.R. Pragman-Maluski, after receiving the approval from the County Prison Board. Licensed cosmologist in good standing with the Commonwealth to provide services at the Lackawanna County prison, agreement to commence January 1st, 2024, and expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is Solicitor Don Fredrickson.
Good morning again, Commissioners. This is a renewal of a contract with Mrs. Pragman. She is the barber at the prison. She does haircuts for the inmates. We pay her, we will be paying her $13.50 a haircut for 2024. It's a three-year contract. It's at the recommendation of the warden and the prison board, so we're just asking to renew her contract. She's been there for about 20 years or more, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fredrickson? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0017?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0019.
Accepting recorder proposal, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the proposal for two-way communications to install and maintain the regional 911 Next Generation Regional Voice Logging Recorder. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of 911, Mr. Al Carney.
Mr. Carney?
Good morning. This is a recorder. At 911, we have a recorder that records all the calls and transmissions of radio and phone.
I think you're right.
Our recorder, we've applied the last two years. We were denied, so we are going to share a recorder with Monroe County, and we received the money through a grant, the statewide interconnectivity grant, which we accepted in December for $195,000. So we each receive, us in Monroe, each receive our own recorder, but we're going to share where it's stored. So we have data that'll be stored at our center and their center, just in case something happens at our center. We'll be able to go to their center and get our recordings. But there's no cost. The maintenance is included and paid for by the state.
Good.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carney?
Al, there's a real positive in sharing equipment, correct?
Correct. Yes, the more we can share, you know, we've shared so many different things, our C.H.E., which is our phone system, and this FiberLink, we do some sharing, that is going to be the next thing. And it just allows us to, the state likes when we share, and we can apply for project money, and we've been receiving quite a bit of project money, which gives us more money out of our 83% money, which is the money to run the 911 center.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you're voting on 24-20, because I skipped 19.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0020?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0019.
Thank you. Accepting the fiber proposal, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the fiber proposal from Penn Teledata Fiber Networks for the fiber link to connect with Monroe County. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Sorry, Al, you can now explain the fiber connection.
Okay. This fiber connection is a link that connects us, the ESI net, which is the emergency services IP network, with Monroe County as part of a link in the northeast core. It helps us connect our equipment. The equipment for our telephone is located in another county, and it rides this path. There's also a backup path. Also, this is also covered under the 15% money and no cost to the county. We received this proposal, which is $500. which is $500 less than the last three-year proposal per month, so.
This is the one that backs up the microwave towers?
Yeah, we have, the microwave is the secondary backup.
Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0019?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0021.
Authorizing the acceptance of Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of the Jewish Home of Eastern Pennsylvania Elan Skilled Nursing and Rehab Facility Renovation Project, whereas the Jewish Home of Eastern Pennsylvania Elan Skilled Nursing and Rehab Facility Renovation Project is to perform renovations of an existing facility at 1101 Vine Street, City of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant. For the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds as a source to finance the project, and whereas the Jewish Home of Eastern Pennsylvania Elan Skilled Nursing and Rehab Facility as proposed, Lackawanna County assists the facility renovation project in obtaining and administering funding from the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program funds. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to accept an award in the amount of $1 million from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant on behalf of the Jewish Home of Eastern Pennsylvania Elan Skilled Nursing and Rehab Facility Renovation Project, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Interim Director of the Planning and Economic Development Group, Ms. Mary Liz Donato.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Liz.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is pretty self-explanatory. We've been asked by the Jewish Home to administer the RACP grant. We are a provider of RACP grants. We've been doing it over several years. We're very successful with this program. No cost to the county, and there's 1% administration fund that goes to the county. Like I said, we've been doing this for quite a long time and been very successful with them.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Donato? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0021?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0024.
Entering into a maintenance agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a one-year maintenance agreement with Reed's Generator Service LLC for the following locations: the courthouse, Jefferson Gateway Building, the Government Center, the Criminal Justice Center, and 315 Franklin Avenue. Commence immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Maintenance, Mr. Mark Dewar.
This is Reed's Generator Service. They've been servicing our generators since, I think, at least 2010 to 2016 and beyond. This company is very capable of keeping our generators up and running at this time, and I wholeheartedly that you voted to agree. The cost is $4,850 a year. That's the 2024.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dewar? Okay, thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0024?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0028.
Awarding the Arts and Cultural Project Grants, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the 2024 Lackawanna County Community Arts and Culture Grant Project Grants in the amount of $113,700 as attached here to adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Arts and Cultural Director, Ms. Maureen McGwin.
Hi, Maureen.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. So, this is a longtime program that really enriches our county. Anybody, individual, nonprofit, municipal, organization cannot apply to get a project grant, which means they can do something in their community. So, if anybody's out there and wants to apply for one next year, our applications will be out in spring. I just want to take a moment to thank all of those leaders in communities. We got the most applications ever. They're doing the hard work to bring these wonderful programs. If you go see a concert at Na'og or up in Carbondale, so I think it's just important to acknowledge the people that put in the hard work, and we're really happy to fund them. There's, if you're bored in Lackawanna County, you shouldn't be. So, again, this is just the awards for people doing community projects around the county.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Maureen? Okay, thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0028?
Motion.
All second.
Motion and a second. On the question? On the question, I just want to thank you for all the work that you do and your office does. The, we're going through all the grants that are going to be awarded and the legislation that's coming up that we're voting on. The impact, as you stated, is pretty amazing in our community, so, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0029.
Miss, you're voting on the Arts and Culture Program Grants, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the 2024 Lackawanna County Arts and Cultural Program Grants in the amount of $210,500 to the following organizations: the Abbotine Business Association, the Actors Circle, the Anthracite Heritage Museum, Arcadia Corral, Artists of the Art Gallery, Ballet Theater of Scranton and Black Scranton Project, Boys and Girls Club, Broadway Theatre League, First Friday of Scranton, Arts at the First Presbyterian Church, Keystone College, Performance Music, Lackawanna Heritage Fair, Lackawanna Historical Society, La Festa Italiana, Lackawanna Heritage Valley, Santa Train, the LRCA River Fest, the NEIU Poetry Out Loud, the North Pocono Cultural Society, Pioneer Knights, St. Uvalde Society, Scranton Civic Ballet Center Company, Scranton Fringe, Scranton Jazz Festival, Scranton Music Association, Scranton Public Theater, Scranton Shakespeare Festival, Scranton Tomorrow, Snowforge, the Scranton, the St. Patrick's Day Parade Association, the Summer Music Festival, the Catholic Coral Society, the Center for the Living City, the Coral Society, the NEPA, the Greenhouse Project Lyric Concert, NEPA Philharmonic, the Waverly Community House, UNC of NEPA, adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Once again, here is Director McGwin.
And once again, you can see there's a lot to do. So, we have two different streams. So, we call this one program stream, and that's for our more established nonprofits who have been in existence a while or gotten a number of project grants. They're all shapes and sizes. So, again, that's just, you have to be a nonprofit or a municipality to apply for these. But again, they're around the county, and there's lots to do, so.
Great job. Thank you. Any questions for Maureen? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0029?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. Resolution 24-0026.
Appointments to Lackawanna County Landbank Board of Directors, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Landbank Board of Directors and thus hereby designate them Chairman. Commissioner Bill Gaughan, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, term to commence immediately and expire at the end of their elected term. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on February 7th, 2024. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it is required by the landbank that another commissioner be appointed, and if serving the last commissioner's term was ended, then you will be serving until your term is ended.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0026?
Motion.
Second.
But a motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. I'd like to make a motion at this time, Motion 24-0022, to authorize the county solicitor, a general counsel, to file a complaint with the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission opposing the Pennsylvania American Water Company water rate increases. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? On the question, just turn it over to Solicitor Fredericksen to explain what this is.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. As you know, Pennsylvania American Water Company has proposed a tremendous rate increase between 25% and 33% on residents in Lackawanna County, throughout the entire northeast region, actually, but it would affect the 216,000 residents here in Lackawanna County. You had asked me to look into preparing a complaint opposing the rate increase, which we have prepared, and we're ready to file once it's approved by you guys.
Thank you. Commissioner McGwin, any comments?
Yeah, Lackawanna County is, and its residents will be directly affected by the outcome of this proceeding. Particularly, these, this proceeding will impact the price at Lackawanna County, and its residents will pay for water and wastewater, as well as the reliability and quality of those services. The rate increase requested by the Pennsylvania American Water Company will result in unjust and unreasonable rates that would impose an economic hardship on Lackawanna County and its residents. Lackawanna County asks the Public Utility Commission to deny any proposed new rates and other tariff charges that apply to consumers in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. Commissioner Chermak, any comments?
Well, I just hope that all our voices are heard. I know there's a lot of, a lot of folks out there that are fighting against this. We have help from our senators and our local representatives, so I hope they hear us. This is something that I hope they deny, so, absolutely.
Thank you. I spoke at the PUC hearing and made my comments known then, and I'll just kind of recap that by saying that it's no secret that people literally cannot afford this. My bill has gone up tremendously. I have five children under the age of eight. I mean, I could barely afford it. I can't even fathom how seniors, people on fixed incomes, we're a middle-class county. A lot of people struggle to pay their bills and just struggle to get by. This is, has had an enormous impact on people. So, this is one small thing that we can do to voice our concerns for the people that we represent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is approved. And now is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the Commissioners?
Joan Hoda wanted Scranton. What you're looking at is pictures from an event in January when two Scranton firefighters went to the children's library to read books to them and explain to them what it means to be a firefighter. And it's debatable who had more fun, the kids or the firefighters. But I bring this up because in recent weeks, we've been talking about the gang problem, not just in Scranton proper, but throughout Lackawanna County. And in my opinion, we need to do as much as we can as a community to reach children before they want to join a gang. We do a good job, I think, in some ways, you know, reacting to gang violence, but we want to prevent people from joining gangs altogether. Now, as you may recall, or you should know, the children's library is a county asset. That's a county building. If you haven't been there recently or have never been there, you should visit. Now, I know you, your kids all have their library cards. Commissioner McGwin, do your children have their library cards?
I'll have to ask my wife on that one, Joan.
Okay.
I believe, Joan, I do have a library card. My kids are grown, so.
Yeah. But the point is, you know, you have a county library system with seven libraries throughout the counties, and you have this library. All of them offer children's services. Remember, the library itself is a service organization. What happens when the schools close down for the summer? Where can kids go? They can go to the library, and they do have a lot of proactive things for them to do. The children's library, the county asset, which is right on Vine Street, they have programs for newborns, I'm not kidding you, newborns through senior high school, seniors in high school. A lot of it is computer-oriented, and I can't describe it because I'm technically illiterate. So, you have to go down there and talk to them. But I think, I know that Scott Thomas, the CEO of the Scranton Public Library, is a member of Scranton's Youth Engagement Council. It's that important. So, as the issue of gangs will periodically raise its ugly head, keep in mind that this is an asset that you have, and we should encourage the public to take advantage. It's fun, it's educational, and it's safe, and we charge no price for admission. We don't care, you know, what your race is, what your gender is, who your parents were, what country you came from. Everyone is welcome, and we, and I would encourage the public to make full use of it. My only other comments is I want to thank you for pushing forward on tax relief for the victims of the September 9th flood. It's very important to me, and for your taking the initiative on these water rate increases and sewage increases, which are unimaginable. And I would also recommend one thing. I know Mr. Bolzoni is working on the application for the State Strategic Management Planning Program, and you're going to turn around twice, and you're going to be preparing the 2025 budget. As that planning program goes forward, because I'm pretty sure you'll get it approved, you might want to periodically, maybe monthly, just let us know how that planning process is going. I think that would be better than any surprises come November. And the people need to be told what the situation is and what to expect, and just don't drop it as a bombshell come December and November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Anita Steenson, and I'm with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Chermak for inviting me here today to speak briefly. First of all, I'd like to thank Lackawanna County for inviting us here and welcoming us with the Disaster Recovery Center down at the Public Safety Building where the Emergency Management Department is located. Specifically, the Emergency Manager, Tom Taylor, and the 911 Director, Al Kearney, who was here, they've been especially instrumental in helping us to get the word out to homeowners, renters, as well as businesses and nonprofits. That is something that a lot of people don't realize, that during disasters, certainly the declaration that Governor Shapiro secured here in Lackawanna County, the Small Business Administration does provide disaster recovery resources to homeowners and renters. Nothing about our name, Small Business Administration, alerts a lot of folks to that, so it's really important that we get that message out. In picking up on what the initial speaker talked about, the September 9th flooding, what we do provide are low-interest loans, which is certainly not the most ideal sort of relief, which would be grants and things of that nature. What I would like to point out is, it is very important for people to apply for an SBA loan, even if you don't necessarily want it or think you can afford it, because especially here in Pennsylvania, a denial of an SBA loan is a pre-qualification to get certain types of grants. I know that seems counterintuitive, but it is very, very important. There is no downside to applying for an SBA loan, especially for our homeowners and renters. I had a conversation with a lot of folks yesterday in the groups that were involved in the Big Mark situation right after the flooding, and that is something that we are really, really going to try and get the message out to people about. Please apply for an SBA loan. It's not ideal, but it certainly can be a step towards getting you the resources you want. And the great thing about the SBA loans is, for homeowners and renters, it's 2.5% interest. For businesses, it's 4%. Nonprofits, it's 2.375. There are no payments and no interest for the first year. Interest does not accrue during that year. Nothing would make us happier than for people to take Nothing would make us happier than for people to take that year and apply for grants, get grants, and other types of resources. If you do qualify for grants during that year, it just reduces the amount of your loan. And, you know, to the point where you can decide during that one year, I don't want this SBA loan, you know, you give back the money, no interest has accrued during that year. It simply provides you a buffer for that year. There's no cost to apply. Even if you get terms and you don't like them, there is even no obligation. But you may be denied the loan. Say you're on a fixed income, you knew you weren't going to qualify for the loan, it can move you on to a resource such as a grant. So please, everybody, come to the Disaster Recovery Center. There's an online application process. We just urge you to try and take advantage of whatever you can. We're here to help. And if I would please encourage the commission to please share our information on whatever social media. Commissioner, if I could follow up with you, and maybe you could direct me to the appropriate person who handles that, and I can give them more tiles or things that are easier for people.
And also remind everybody, so you're up at the 911 center, just remind everybody when you are there until...
Yes. We currently are only here on the ground right now until February 15. The application to apply for physical disaster loans is March 25, so you will still have the online ability to do that, but we certainly encourage you to take advantage of our expertise while we're here.
And the hours that you're there?
The hours that we're here are nine to six, Monday through Friday. On Saturdays, we're here 10 to 2, I believe our hours are. That'll all be in the information I'd love to share online.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down. I have, you gave me one.
I'd like to address a void that we have and how to get help for measures that are needed to implement and ensure the election integrity.
Excuse me. Could you state your name, please?
Hi, my name is Patricia Polikowski, and I'm a poll worker, and that's what brings me to know all this information of holes in our system. And so the training, according to what I see online, it says that the minimum age is 17, you must be a U.S. citizen and county resident. You must complete training to be a poll worker, and the training details are in-person training, and it's about one and a half hours. You do get paid for training, and you do get paid for working on Election Day as a poll worker. Well, I've been doing it for six years. I've never had training by the local county, and I've been a minority inspector for most of the time. And so I feel that the judge of elections, the minority inspectors, and the majority inspectors should be trained, and I don't know whether in Pennsylvania it's required for every election, which it should be, or if it's for once a year or once in a lifetime. However, many people that work at the polls that I've talked to said that they have never had training. And I see a lot of things that they're doing because of not having the training that are against the rules of being a poll worker. And so I think that the training is really important, and I hope that we could start implementing it to everyone that is working the polls. And then voting at the location at the Scranton School District, there were eight wards there. So that's where I saw a lot of things that people were doing that were a no-no to be a poll worker. And what I want to address primarily right now is that the eight wards were there, but they were on top of each other, and it was a mess. The voters were complaining that the location setup really needs improvement. They didn't like parking in the lower parking lot, having to walk up the hill. It wasn't good for wheelchair accessibility. People were illegally parking in all of the spots right in front of the school entrance, and the tables were on top of each other. There was a table, there was a machine, and the tables were only for two people. And that's another thing with the election integrity. If you have two people only working at a table, a judge and another person, whether they should be, I guess the minority inspector, because the judge and minority inspector are to sign all the documents for provisional ballots, et cetera. So if you have only two people working, and you have to have two people to be able to help a voter filling in their ballot or whatever, you don't have enough people. And there were several wards out of this eight that only had two people, and the tables that they provided only sat two people with two chairs and a machine and then another table. And the names were on the front of the tables, so somebody went up to vote, they couldn't see what ward they needed to go to to cast their vote. I know that it was the first time there, and good thing it was just a small turnout because it wasn't a major election, but this year is, and so something needs to be done to be able to change that. I see online that the polling location needs to be determined 20 days before the election, so we have enough time, and hopefully something could really be done there.
So ma'am, if you, sorry up here. Right here, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
The acoustics in this room.
I need my glasses to see far, but I can't see with them on.
If you leave your information with our chief of staff, Brian Jeffers, like a phone number or an email, some of these questions that you have listed here, we'll try to get answered for you, okay?
Okay, I appreciate it.
And we'll take this into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Hello, my name's Denise Nars. This is my fourth month returning. I'm a citizen that has resided in HUD subsidized, excuse me, HUD subsidized public housing in Scranton for over 10 years. Let me just get my notes in order. And during that time, I have not had any criminal charges, I have not had any issues with my tenancy, I have participated in my community service, I have bettered my community, until that changed two years ago, when the property management changed and I started raising legitimate cares and concerns with my living environment. The Housing Authority of the County of Lackawanna has been ignoring, dismissing, and not taking seriously the tenants that reside in public housing. They ignore our complaints and our concerns. They ignore blatant health and safety issues within side and outside our units. They ignore our complaints about how, they ignore our complaints about how housing personnel treats us, treats the tenants. Tenants should not be threatened and intimidated in their own homes. No one listens to us. No one takes responsibility or accountability for the things happening at the sites, at our sites. Everyone knows, everybody knows from the top down and everybody in between, but nothing gets done and nothing changes. I may reiterate, because I have some different notes, the whole Housing Authority personnel has failed to provide disabled, poor tenants that reside in HUD subsidized housing, safe, decent housing. They ignore blatant health and safety issues. In addition, they abuse their power and use their position of authority to intimidate tenants. They target tenants that raise legitimate cares and concerns on issues that have, on issues they have no interest in fixing. My case is a prime example. It shows the extreme lengths that the Housing Authority will go to avoid taking responsibility, which include intimidating and targeting tenants. However, there are other tenants who are experiencing similar mistreatment. Most tenants are fear of speaking out because they may also be threatened and intimidated and targeted and abused. The Housing Authority of the County of Lackawanna has violated its own lease and their own policies and missions and contingency of occupancy policies. They have a whole policy. They have their own 20-page lease, their own 200-page policy manual, and they have also violated HUD regulations, okay? The personnel take advantage. They take advantage of the fact that tenants do not fully understand their legal rights. Tenants are uneducated. I'm not that tenant, but there are other tenants that reside in public HUD subsidized housing. I mean, it's HUD subsidized housing. Tenants are in there because they're disabled, they're poor, they have issues, mental health issues, physical disabilities. They don't understand the rights. They can't afford an attorney, so they get to get away. They keep getting away with abusing their power. You know, when we complain, I complained, and I complained, and nothing gets done. I've been here four months in a row. The commissioners were going to contact me, the prior commissioners, nobody contacted me. I feel like I talk, and nothing gets done. You know, there are tenants up there. I had to move. I am fighting an eviction now in the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court because I should have never been evicted in the first place. No tenant does that. No tenant's going to spend thousands of dollars to fight an eviction, because why would they? Why wouldn't they just leave, right? Make a deal, make a resolution. What does this make a deal with, my life? I'm living in a mold-infested apartment. Well, correction. I was residing in a mold-infested apartment that has mold growing up the walls, but the Housing Authority fails to acknowledge it. They had their own inspector come in a year ago. Do I get cut off again?
Yeah, your time is up, but I will say this, just so Solicitor, because I really don't want you to think that we're not, we're just like blowing you off, but just hold on one second. So I don't know that this is the best avenue for you to take in terms of getting a resolution to the issues that you're having. So Solicitor Fredrickson, what would the proper course of action be for this woman?
Well, Commissioner, she's already involved in litigation with the authority. I mean, we don't control the actions of the authority. They're an independent authority that, they act independent of us. We don't control them, so they don't answer to us directly.
But who do they answer to?
We do appoint their board, but they're independent. That's why they're an authority, they're separate from us. But she's already involved in litigation. I mean, it's before the courts at this point, there's really nothing we can do about that at this point, so.
All right.
The eviction is, but who stands up for the tenants that are still residing that are being mistreated?
I understand. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So where do I go now? Because...
And the tenants do have a representative on that board, just so you know. There is a tenant representative on the board, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Charles Wallinger, a lifetime resident of Lakely. I just, a couple days ago, was reading your cash flow situation from my financial standpoint, and I just put together briefly in a day, so apologize for not being expanded on this or even spell-checked it. What I wanted to do is just bring a couple of ideas, because I have 20 years of financial experience, both in a director position, and I've also worked at the State Workers Insurance SWF as a unionized person. So my thoughts were that you have an uphill battle, and I believe the community is going to support the three of you in addressing all of the financial issues that the county has. But I have some good ideas, and I've also been on the Scranton School District Advisory Board, so with Dr. Fein and Pat LaFaye, when they had, you know, they have turned the ship around. But I feel that, I think I have just some ideas that I've presented to you, and I can talk all day on these, so I just wanted to give you some ideas of where you can start looking at cutting some costs and increasing your revenues and improving cash flow. So my thought was, you need to look at health insurance costs, huge overlay, and understanding you have to stay within the union negotiated contract. But there are areas where the county can possibly take some risks, but also maybe increasing deductibles where you wouldn't increase it on your employees, but, you know, you can take a risk in that way, get your overall expenses down. I also thought you might want to look into self-insurance, where it would not affect the unionized contract. So the coverage doesn't change for the people, but it, but you can save money down the road for the county. It would be initial outlay, but I think like in two or three years, if the analysis is done properly, you can actually save quite a bit of, quite a bit of money in that, and it's been proven. I know, for example, ACE uses, Jim Wansack, right? They have self-insurance. It, I know that's, it's a very good benefit for them, right? So we, I think you should look into some of these areas. And also, just take a look at possibly your 401(c) or 401(k) contract, see if there's any savings there from an administrative standpoint, and see if you can, you know, take that and best utilize that piece. Also, and I think this is very important, is to have a very monitored budget review by department from your finance, and look at like where the line items are just not matching up, and of course, look at the departments that are bleeding, right? Like what is causing your deficit? What is causing the cash flow issues? That's where, if you can focus on that, I think you can really like start, you know, chipping away at the piece. It's going to take a long time, as you have said. I mean, understandable, but I think, you know, there are ways to start turning, turning some of the pieces around. And I've seen, I've heard, like even for some of the people that have addressed you today to get passages, I see that they look into grants. I think expanding grant revenue would be a super way for you, you know, to help. And what you do is, not necessarily add staff, but you can draw down that administrative piece that can help, and it provides whatever that grant outcome is for the community, right? So I think that that would be, that would be a really, you know, really smart, smart thing to do. And from a cash flow standpoint, I know that, and I've worked in the government area, mostly on the provider side, throughout my career, but if you look at the drawdowns and have somebody in your finance department monitoring your, the departmental drawdowns, to make sure your cash is, like you're getting every penny of it, and even if you have projected cash on those drawdowns from the government funds.
Okay. Thank you very much for putting this together and taking the time to come out today and share your concerns and some potential solutions, so we'll definitely take it under advisement. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? No? Okay, Commissioners, other business, Commissioner McGoyne?
Yeah, I just want to, again, thank our firefighters for being here with us at the start of the meeting. I want to thank our veterans, Harold and Paul, for being, for being here with us today, and thank you both for your service. Just a few things, some of you may remember, we gave Frank Dubas a proclamation not too long ago, and on Sunday from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., the public is invited to the Garden of Cedar to write valentines in support of Officer Gil Martin. Several volunteers will be doing the inscriptions for the hearts, and any donations received will be given to the family of Officer Gil Martin. The ICE Festival, this Friday, February 9th at 5:30, the ICE Festival on Courthouse Square will take place with activities, entertainment, and more than 50 ICE sculptures. Starting at 6:30, the live ICE carving will take place. And lastly, I just, I just want to mention, yesterday morning, my assistant, Josh Castellani, and I had the opportunity to go to the Scranton School for Deaf and Hard of Hearing. We got, we got a chance to tour the school, to meet the students, and I had the opportunity to read the students a book titled, "Trying." The school is truly amazing. I just want to take a moment to thank Dean Petnato, Doug Borsma, the staff, and the students for welcoming me with open arms yesterday into their beautiful school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McGoyne, Commissioner Turmac?
Yeah, we do have the ICE Festival coming up, and this year, we could not get the ice that doesn't melt, so get down there soon to see it, because it's not going to be very cold. But it should be a nice time at Courthouse Square. Also, now this isn't for a while, but our Senator, Senator Brown, has a new program, because this is something that bothers me, our license plates, our Pennsylvania license plates fall apart, they deface and they just, you can't read them. It's coming up April 25th, Thursday, April 25th, 4:30 till 6:30. You can stop by her office in Jefferson Township, and I'll remind everybody when we get closer, but if you have a damaged or worn license plate, we can get that replaced, there's no charge for that. So that's coming up in April, so, other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. At our last Commissioners' meeting earlier this month, or earlier in January, we voted on legislation authorizing the county to apply for the State Strategic Management Planning Program. I'm happy to announce today that the county was accepted into that program. An RFP has been issued, and we will now move through that process and then select a firm that's going to work with us to develop a long-term financial plan for the county, along with conducting a much-needed operations assessment to see where we can save money and become more efficient. As part of that process, there is language in the RFP that, and we are asking any of the firms that submit the RFP to also conduct an emergency review of the county's finances. Every day that I'm in this office, I'm reminded of how bad the county's finances actually are. So many people have stopped me on the street over the last few weeks, absolutely stunned, as I was when I took office, that the county had millions of dollars in unpaid bills. Truthfully, it's an embarrassment that it's been allowed to get this bad. This isn't just because of the last administration, this has been slowly happening over the last few years. But I want the people of this county to know that we're going to do everything in our power to fix it and to turn it around, but it's going to take time, and difficult decisions are on the horizon. This is the first step of many that we will need to take to stabilize our finances and start implementing best practices. As one of the speakers mentioned today, you know, you don't want to drop a bomb on anybody when the budget comes out later on this year. I'm going to drop the bomb right now, it's not going to be pretty. We are in severe, severe financial condition. And again, I'm reminded of that every day I walk through these doors, every day I talk to Dave Lozoni in Revenue and Finance, so I don't want there to be any surprises. This is pretty serious. Now, I am confident that we're going to be able to turn it around, but there's several steps that we're going to need to take to be able to do that. The first is to just be honest with everyone, that it is a problem, which we've done. And the second step is to put together a comprehensive plan, which is why I'm glad to announce today again that we have been accepted into this program. I also want to announce that we have several open cabinet positions, Economic Development, Parks and Recreation, and Health and Human Services, these are all really important, crucial positions in county government. We are looking for motivated, talented people, so if you are interested, please apply at And that's all I have. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ICE have it, and the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.